Yeah.
Is staff ready on this? So I'll call the planning commission at seven twenty-nine. Open up the planning commission. So a roll call, please.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Here.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Here.
And we'll show Commissioner Murphy as absent.
So the second on the item approval of minutes, we've got the regular meeting of November the seventh. And I believe the three people here all attended those meetings, so we can actually approve that minutes. If everybody so chooses.
Sure. I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for Monday, November seventh, two thousand twenty-two.
I'll second.
And a roll call?
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes. Thank you. And the November twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
A roll call, please.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes. So are there any changes to the agenda?
No changes, Vice Chair Hancock.
Thank you. So this is the section that we open it up for the public. Oral and written communications is what it's called. The public is asked to please step to the podium or indicate online, I guess, and state your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to items not already agendized for discussion. If you're attending remotely, please raise the hand icon to speak, or if you're dialing in use, star nine. Anybody here in the audience would like to speak? Anybody online?
Thank you, Vice Chair Hancock. Speaking to our Zoom attendees, if you would like to make a comment at this time, please use the raise hand icon. Vice Chair Hancock, that will end public comment.
Thank you. So it ends oral and written communications. So we go to matters at hand. So the first item, very interesting one, consideration of a resolution recommending city council approval of design review and a cottage housing development plan for a proposed cottage housing project located at nine oh-two East Catati Avenue. Pass it off to staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Hancock, members of the commission. My name is J.P. Harries. I'm a senior planner with the City of Catati. And tonight, we're talking about, excuse me, the first cottage housing project that has come in since we adopted the ordinance, I would say, almost a year ago now. And I guess why don't I start off right away by saying the colors that you see represented on that slide are from an old graphic that didn't print well. And you have in front of you a revised graphic, which actually replaces page twenty-eight of your packet. And so you could see a little bit of a different color scheme there. And also, I might as well just say right off the bat that we received two comment letters on this project. One of them is on page fifty of your packet, and the other one I distributed. Both are, one is definitely in favor of the project, especially demolishing the existing residence that's in poor condition that's there. And then the other one, just wanted to make sure that it was from the HOA next door, that the construction workers didn't use that area for parking, so. But in general, are aware of the project and don't seem to have any, any issues with it. Okay, next slide, please. So as I said, this is a cottage housing project, and I'll talk a little bit more about cottage housing as we get into it. What is interesting, though, as a cottage housing project, and if you reflect back to when we did go through the ordinance, we looked at a lot of larger parcels. And this one is a ten thousand square foot lot. And it's about the smallest lot where you could pull off this kind of project. So it was really interesting for us to see something come in on a small lot and whether or not it could could meet the goals of the ordinance. And we believe it did. So the intent of the project is to demolish the existing vacant dilapidated residence that's currently on the site and construct four residential units, primary units, and two ADUs. Essentially, it's two duplexes with an ADU facing one, facing one another with a central courtyard, central drive area, and common area. And it provides two garage parking spaces for each primary unit, and it also provides a covered guest space. And an interesting thing about the project is the ADUs are kind of at the rear of the project. And as we'll look at, when we get into looking at the architecture, the primary residents were also where there's the parking. That's, those are two-story structures, and it steps down to a one-story ADU towards the rear. Putting the ADUs at the rear of this property, well, let's move on, and we'll talk about that when I can show you a site plan. This is the location of, of the property. It is on, right on East Catati Avenue. It's generally surrounded by multifamily or small lot, high density, small lot, single family, and is very close to the train station. As you could see, that's the train station there on, on the right-hand side. There's just a couple commercial, there's a commercial office building across the street at nine oh-five, and there's a car wash near the train station, and then there's a shell station down at Lancaster. But other than that, it's primarily commercial, including a very high-density residential commercial development. That's actually part of Roanoke Park, which is in the top left of that, of that image there. Next slide, please. This is just an aerial view to show you how it sets in. Obviously, it fronts on the East Catati Avenue on what actually is, I guess, would be the east side. It is towards Breen Way. It's all just a parking lot on that, just on the east side of the property. On the west side, which is on the right-hand side of this image, it's a driveway back to the development, the multifamily, yeah, multifamily development towards the back. So it really only meets up with the development on one side, and that's actually at the rear of the property, where it will kind of be adjacent to, to other development. Next slide, please. And for clarification, this is, this is zoned NM. It's a medium-density zoning district. It permits eight to ten units per acre. On this lot, under normal circumstances, they would be able to build two units, and, and they could also do two ADUs. So, but they are proposing four units and two ADUs. So there is an increase. They are taking advantage of the density increase that you can get through the cottage housing ordinance. Maximum height is twenty-eight feet. They're proposing twenty-six feet, four inches. Front setbacks, twenty feet. That's what their proposal is. The rear is twenty. But with ADUs, you can go to four, and that's what they, that's what they're proposing. And partially the reason why they place the ADUs at the rear, to take advantage of that reduced setback, which is granted through state law and has been codified into our ordinance. Additionally, it, she was another nice thing, because at the rear, those properties that are kind of behind there are about one story, one and a half story. So what it does is it tapers down, and it just makes a consistent massing right in that area. So the project's not going to impose on the developments around it. Side setbacks, five feet, which it's proposing. Coverage is fifty-five percent maximum. That was a recent change that we adopted in the last year to increase coverage, but they are only proposing forty-five. And part of the reason why you're seeing that reduced is because of implementing some of the cottage housing elements like pervious pavement and pervious surfaces and open space requirements. I already mentioned the parking. They basically comply with the parking, which is two per unit plus a guest unit for every four spaces. No parking for ADUs. We can't require it because of their proximity to the train station. Well, actually, you know, pretty much anywhere in Catati, we cannot require parking for ADUs. And next slide, please. So some of the cottage housing features. The units are less than sixteen hundred feet. I don't have it on this slide, but they, they range from one thousand thirty-four square feet to one thousand two hundred and ninety-one square feet, the, the primary units. So these are smaller units, which is part of the goal of the cottage housing, was to try to promote smaller units. The ADUs are five hundred square feet. Given the four primary units, they're required to have a two thousand square foot common area. They are met that by going right, right close to it, that two thousand and four square feet of common open space, and they do have the shared amenities that, that you can actually, that will fit into that space. They provide, they meet the private open space requirement by providing between four hundred and fifteen, four hundred and forty per unit, and there's a four hundred square foot requirement. They have a central pervious driveway, which provides access from East Catati Avenue. They did include the solar, yeah, well, solar and EV charging are, are conditioned part of the project, and it does include the entry porches. And I've already mentioned that they're proposing four units there, which is an increase in density over the, the two units that would be allowed on this lot. Next slide. So this is just a site layout, bird's eye view. East Catati Avenue is on the left-hand side of this image. And so you enter at the center, and parking is immediate as you enter. And then as you move through to the property, you get to the common, common area. And there's some other images that are in this slide, PowerPoint, as well. They're in your packet. Next slide. This one kind of just illustrates that, that space a little more. Also, if you could go back one slide. I don't have, I didn't include a landscape slide in, in, in the presentation. This starts to show it, but it, that will include, you know, street trees along East Catati Avenue and a pretty really nice landscape, a really nice palette of, of plants and trees that tend to be almost all native and low, low water usage. It is in your packet, and you can review that a little more closely, but those are the circles that you're seeing there is just kind of representing the landscaping. And there's some renderings that are coming up that will help to give you a sense of how it would feel in that space. Okay, next slide, please. Thanks. And then the next slide. So this is the way, if you're at East Catati Avenue, that, that top image is kind of, kind of the approach. There're basically two buildings that face each other. If you're at one building, looking at the other, this is kind of what you would see. And you can see how the ADU is a single-story ADU on the right-hand side. That would be the back of the property with the, with the, the entry porchway on the, on the left over towards East Catati Avenue. So the building does marry itself to, to the street and the, and the sidewalk there. Next slide, please. So this is the approach. As if you were at, at East Catati Avenue, entering, this is kind of the view. You can get a sense of landscaping and kind of what the, the driveway surface will be. So that's like a turf block, but they use a decomposed granite in the center. They could use plants, but the granite might work just fine. But it does provide an alternative surface. And so attractive. Next slide. And I'm just going to walk through down. And now here's where you leave that driveway area. Now you're entering into that common area. And then next slide. And now you're getting into the area where there's more of the amenities. There's a barbecue pit. There's a sitting area. There's a fire pit. And next slide. And then just an area where, you know, people can sit and meet. And next slide. And so that's what the stand-up mic presentation, staff is recommending that planning commission conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution recommending city council approval of design review and the cottage housing development plan. The cottage housing development plan is the plan set that is attached to the packet. And to, and it would allow construction of four residential units and two ADUs at nine oh-two East Catati Avenue. And I will say that the owner, Noel Kirby, is here as well, I believe. Online, we have the architectural team and maybe some of the other staff that have worked on, not staff, but project developers that have worked on the project. And they're here to say a few words, answer any questions that you might have. And with that, I'm available to answer any questions or comments that you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. So shall we go with commission questions first, and then we'll open it up to the the owner and the developer to present? Does that work?
Just a, a couple of questions. Are these intended to be rental apartment units, or is it a single owner and, with a single owner, are owner occupied, or?
Originally, it came in, it was going to be single-family dwelling, but as the project matured in review, they chose to, it would be, it's going to be a rental, so single ownership and, and rental units. That's the way it is today. There's nothing that would prevent them from the future from subdividing the property like a condominium-type subdivision or a townhouse subdivision.
Along those lines, if it is individual units, and if this isn't the place to ask this question, let me know. Are there like HOA or terms and conditions and shared funding for common space and all those kinds of things that you would get in a traditional townhouse, townhome development?
Right. If they were to do that, it's not part of this project now, and it would be, at this point, it would be a separate, a whole separate application. But under those conditions, that's absolutely, we would be looking at for an HOA or some sort of maintenance agreement. But in this case, it'd probably be an HOA to maintain those common areas, the driveway, the drainage facilities, and then whatever else that, that would need to be included in that. But we would only look at that as part of a subdivision. Under single ownership, we don't need that kind of structure.
Okay. And then you had answered my question earlier in the day about the location of the trash and recycle. And is that a common space, then, that everyone uses? There's, it looks like there's one in each building?
Yeah, that, those are, those are two common areas. If they want to elaborate on that, I did tell them to be aware that there were questions about the, the recycling and garbage. But my understanding of, from looking at the plans, that those are the common areas. And Lisa, if you're wondering where those are, they're like on the stair area towards East Catati Avenue.
I had a question on that, too. This is a tight area.
Yeah.
So along the lines of John, I don't want to.
No, go ahead.
So just along that, there's, there's three commodities that need to be done: compost, recycle, and garbage. So when we say recycling, we're just, we're going to add one more to that, because that should be the language that we're all seeing at this point. So on that, this is really tight for a bin, for a dumpster or anything like that. You would have to have carts there. So when you have to have carts there, you have to have them wheeled out. I know this because of my job. And so when you have to have them wheeled out, they have to be wheeled out to the street. So I don't know if you are recognizing that, but at some point, a truck's not going to be able to go in there and service these. I mean, and maybe they are. Maybe there is enough room to go in there, but it's a tight fit on a ten thousand square foot.
Yeah. We, we're aware of that. We, we actually, there is a condition.
Is it way back in the resolution?
It's, it's in the resolution, but the condition, I can just summarize the condition. It's that they have to get basically a will-serv letter from recology and identify where this pickup is going to, to occur. I don't, so either it's going to be on the street, which I don't think is, is ideal. It'd be better if the truck could come into the development and pick up and, pick up the bins. But they are not going to be dumpsters. They're going to be individual bins.
Yeah.
Yeah, carts. And there's two storage areas, one on, in each building for the cart, cart storage. But yes, they are going to have to be wheeled out, because same as, you know, any other kind of duplex would have to do.
I have no other questions.
Okay, thanks, John.
So my, my, that was along the lines of John and I, I mean, that was one of my questions, too. But I'm just curious on the ADUs. So there's no, there's no parking for an ADU. It's, can you just elaborate a little bit on the parking there?
Well, the project doesn't propose it, and we can't require ADU parking under, under state law.
We require parking for the, for the other units.
There is parking, yeah. There's two, two parking spaces for each primary unit, plus one guest parking space. That guest parking space could be used for ADU parking. There's also the possibility that they could do a tandem parking situation, park in front of the garage. I mean, those are, those are the possibilities, but it is, it is the reality that, you know, it's, it fit a lot onto that little property.
Yeah. No, I, when I looked at the, the project, I was like, wow, it's, it's packed in there.
Yeah. It maximizes, for sure.
Yeah. So, well, I guess that would be my only concern, but I mean, I, if, I guess I'll try to work it out with the tenants that are out there. If they do have all of cars. I just know we've had issues in the past with people parking off-site, and that becomes an issue for the neighborhood, as we saw. We already have a letter on that, just for the construction, so. Now, I mean, other than that, I, you know, tightly packed, but I don't have any questions.
Thank you. So to follow up on that one on garbage, would all of the, I mean, this is just a discussion, but would all the garbage be on one side that would facilitate somebody driving in? I mean, I know just from the way it works on my street, everybody puts across on the other side of the street, and the truck only has to stop once and pull up. So if they were all located in one place, then it would make it a lot easier for however the vehicle tends to get in. But is that, is that a discussion we have here?
I, I think that, that's, that's a potential solution. We tried not to solve that problem because we didn't have recology in the room, and why we conditioned it thusly, that they have to work with recology to figure out how they're going to do their pickup.
So that's, that's just basically at the moment is recology.
Yeah.
Or LISA, and?
It might be, it will be LISA.
Well, in, in my opinion on that, too, just because I've done this for a long time, is it, you would have to have two trucks that would have to go in. It's not one truck, because you have three commodities there.
Right.
So the wear and tear on the street, I would, if, if it was my project, I would not want a truck in there. I would want to put my stuff on the street. I'm just saying, I'm just spitballing. I'm not in charge of that part of the operations, but they're heavy trucks.
They.
And they, and, and to have something just wheeled onto the street where it just gets picked up and wheeled back in is much easier for our trucks and much easier on the infrastructure of a new property.
Well, that would bring to my question also in, or one question, in, in vehicles transitioning across the sidewalk and safety, given that this could be a higher trafficking area on the sidewalk, how do we envisage keeping the safety side there? And by that, I think I mean keeping the visibility. If there's, if the trap, if anybody is moving across that sidewalk, the key is, is that there's visibility for the vehicle coming out and any pedestrians walking across there. So is that being a?
It's kind of baked into our front setback. We do have a twenty-foot front setback from the building, which should provide the visibility that you're discussing. In terms of the traffic volumes, I think, given, you know, when you look at the density of housing, and on both sides, you're looking at far more development coming in. So this is one of the least. So this is one of the lesser, lesser of the potential safety threats to someone on that sidewalk, in my opinion. Four units versus a lot more over on Breenway and then a lot more just right next door. I'd have to go back to the backside of that property. Four units should generate, and I'm not sure about the ADU, but you're talking about like 40 trips a day. That's like 40 times back and forth across that threshold in a single day. It just kind of spaces out pretty well. But I think the front setback, which they did maintain, is your primary safety.
Right. I just wanted to ask a question. I mean, it looks a very good space to slow to move into. I mean, I think that's the advertisement to any drivers moving from the road is, is that they have to slow down as they move into that, which would mean they'd slow down as they move across the sidewalk. So I, I think it looks good, but I was just asking the question that was there. The other question also that I think is going to become more topical and I think somewhat addressed here, but the EV charging situation, that will be up to the property owner for the future to?
We have, it's a requirement of the cottage housing ordinance. You must provide at least half of the units with, with EV charging for cars. And that is a condition of the project that they do that. My recommendation to them would be to install EV chargers, you know, in every space and the, and the, and the guest space. The guest space will have it and then they have to put it in at least two of the garages. And that, that's the minimum that they have, that they can do.
Two of the four?
Two of the four.
But it's typical really that you have a meter, you have all the wiring associated in that house.
You might as well do it to all. I mean, that's where we're going, but our ordinance, you know, only requires them to do 15. So that's where we've conditioned it.
Good to see. Well, I certainly like that drivable grass, that visibility there for speed and for, for permeability. And it looks very distinct.
Yeah.
Looks very nice. Any other questions? And so we'd like to open it up to the public if the, the owner or any one of the team to do with it would like to speak.
Hi, I'm Noel Kirby, the property owner. I'm here with my wife, Lisa. All I'll say is thanks very much for having us here and being able to present this in front of you. We're excited about doing it. And I understand your concerns about the waste. We'll do everything in our power to make sure it's done in the best possible way. It's definitely good to highlight all these things now. In terms of the design, we've worked closely with JP over the last probably year and a half, I'd say, to come to this design. We think we're happy it meets all the guidelines and we hope that all of yous like it too. That's all I really have to say. I know Juancho, the architect who worked with us designing this is on Zoom and he's going to say a few words as well. Thank you.
Thank you. We switch to the architect then and? Yes, Juancho, you have the floor.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening, commissioners. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, we can.
Okay. Thank you. And I hope you're all doing well. Thank you for the opportunity to present this project and giving us your time. My name is Juancho Isadora. I am the project architect. My clients, the project team and I are very pleased to present this project. You know, much of what I was about to say, JP did such a fantastic job of presenting it that I feel like I'm going to repeat most of the things that he's already said. But I'll go ahead with, with what I had intended to say. Similar to the general objectives of the city cottages, the city's cottage housing ordinance, our objective for this site is very much the same. First, we wanted to develop the site by the effective and efficient use of the small lot size. And as you're very much aware by now, that it is a very lot size and very challenging to fit this many units on the site. And I believe we were, we were successful in doing that and, and provide all the necessary and required amenities that was required for the cottage housing. Secondly, we wanted to propose a housing type that responds to various household sizes and types such as family housing and smaller, single parent housing. And I think with the various sizes, we were able to achieve that as well. Thirdly, we wanted to introduce to an already existing residential area with this dwelling type that allows a, a density bonus and design flexibility. The other general objectives of the city's cottage housing ordinance includes provisions for a centrally located common open space. That is to promote a sense of community and to provide private landscape areas for individual dwellings to foster a sense of ownership. In a few minutes, our landscape architect, our project team, her name is Gina, will be presenting the landscape design to you. The project is also designed to maintain the character of the existing residential neighborhoods and show compatibility, especially with those in the immediate surrounding residential developments. My associate Andrew Tang is also online here. He will do a short presentation regarding that design, exterior design. Just briefly, we are proposing two separate buildings. Each building has two single family dwelling, main dwelling units and an ADU. As JP had mentioned earlier, the site can be accessed in the middle off of Cotati Avenue with a central driveway to access eight private garages and one guest parking. The two front units are on the second floor with the garages below it and their entry and entry porch is facing the street. The two middle units are two-story smaller units and the two ADUs are towards the rear. The middle units and the ADU are facing the central courtyard. Lastly, I just want to touch base on, most of you had question about the trash area. I was actually in communication with Recology about the requirements and recommendations for the trash area. So that room that you have, that I'm showing there below the stairs will fit two, I'm sorry, three large plastic bins that are on wheels. And we really didn't talk about how they're going to be picked up, whether the bins need to be pulled out towards the sidewalk or someone has to bring them towards the central driveway. But he did say that the frequency of pickups can be, can be negotiated, I guess, by the, the homeowners or the renters or whoever the, the property owner is. And that will, you know, and they can discuss that at a later date. But the, each of the spaces underneath the stair on each side will be able to fit the trash, the recycling and compost bins. I welcome your input and I'm here available to answer any of your questions you may have. Thank you.
We also have Andrew on the line with his hand up. Andrew, you have the floor.
Yeah. Hello, can, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes.
Yes, hi. Good evening. My name is Andrew Tang. I'm the project designer for these, this project. I mainly focused on the exterior and then the massing of the, the project itself. I think Juancho did a great explanation on the overall design of the, in, in terms of whole plan wise. And so a brief summary of what, what the design gesture we did. We tried to reduce the massing and then scale down the overall roof form of the two separate buildings. So by doing so, we break down the roof forms into smaller gable roof throughout the main roof. So it feels, has a more of a, more intimate scale to the whole development. And in terms of for the colors, we picked the three different colors to distinguish the different building masses. These three colors that we used, the more baby blue color and then moss green color and a little bit of a salmon color. These are the color that we, we found it's a dominating color scheme that was used on, all along the development along Cotati. So we feel that this color scheme would blend the, our projects into the surroundings context seamlessly. And so also in the, last but not least, the usage of the siding, the hardy plank sightings, also is one of the most dominating siding materials around the area. So when we use that, we would like to reinforce the whole cottage house motif as well and blends in with the surroundings as well. So that will, that was all the design gesture we inputted in for the exterior and the perspective of the, of the design. Thank you.
And then we also have Jita on the line. Jita, you have the floor.
Hi, I'm, I'm Gita. I'm with the landscape design team, face open. And I, you know, I similarly, I think that JP and Juancho did a good job of describing our design intent. But I just sort of wanted to highlight some of the, the bigger moves that we approached the project with. One of which he mentioned was the, the permeable driveway. A big part of the project for us was ensuring that there was as much permeable surfacing as possible for stormwater. And the reason that we chose filling it with DG as opposed to planting was just to ensure the long-term viability and minimize any sort of excess irrigation that might be required for areas that have planting. And so we were trying to keep it low maintenance, but also performative. And that also guided the decision to incorporate a, a large amount of planting as well. And the sort of courtyard and, and more of a garden-esque typology of, of landscape as a, a complement to the architecture. And bring it down in scale to the more sort of residential scale so that the project doesn't, we've, we thought that the landscape was an opportunity to sort of bring it to the human scale and make it feel like still in that residential town. And so all of the planting that we've proposed is drought tolerant and climate adaptive, majority native planting, as JP mentioned. And yeah, low irrigation. And we're also proposing a row of street trees along Cotati as well. Just again, as a way to sort of buffer the project and create some privacy from the street.
And so that's the end of the owner's presentation. Any, any questions on that from the council? Or I'll open it up to public comment next. So if we can open it up for any other public comment that might be occurring.
Vice Chair Hancock, Gita was the only one on the attendees list. So that will end public comment for Zoom attendees.
Thank you very much. Anybody here in the council would like to, or in the room would like to talk to the project? We're not seeing anybody here, so I'll close the project. I'll close the public comment and bring it back to the commission. Any questions or comments or?
I don't have any questions or comments. I mean, I do have some comments. I, I like the idea that we're doing more infill and we're being more creative when it comes to smaller lots like this. I like the design. I, I really like everything about this. I, I would love more EV charges, chargers, but I mean, I mean, we're, we're, we're always encouraging. So, but I, I, I think it's a good design and I think that it's well planned out. So kudos to our staff and, and to the, to the owner.
I think you mentioned this is our first cottage home development since these have kind of been conceptualized. It'll be interesting after the fact to maybe go back and do a recap of, did it come out like we intended things to do? And are there changes we need to make to our processes to help this, you know, make it even better the next time? Because I think it's a great project and it'll be interesting to see what learnings, you know, we gather from it.
Thank you. So yes, I agree. I think great for the owners, your concept, your vision there is, is fantastic for Cotati. I, I think that small area, you've done a really nice putting things in. It is going to be a higher density area. And I, I think, you know, it's, it's going to cause, it could cause a discussion, but it's a small series of units that fits very well with Cotati having the smaller lot size, lot sizes that we can get a very specific attractive project here. So I very much appreciate the work you've done on it and trying to understand it. I, I think the EV for this size, we've got a discussion that we've got more coming on, but I think the electrical infrastructure probably will absorb any growth, hopefully, as we get for EVs. So that's within those smaller parts. So I, I think it's a great, great project. Anybody want to offer a?
I can do that, a resolution.
A resolution or?
Make a motion to a firm of resolution, a planning commission in City of Cotati, recommending city council to do a design review in the cottage housing development plan. Proposed cottage housing project located at?
I'm sorry, my, my, nine oh two East Cotati Avenue.
A second.
We could have a roll call. Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Savage?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hancock?
Yes. So congratulations and good luck with the, the project, with the team that you've got there. And thank you for presenting it. Good work to staff and be interested to hear any, any thoughts on that. What's worked, hard work to try and get that done. So we can move on to the next item, which is reports by staff.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Just briefly, so as is evidenced by our commission this evening, we are down two commissioners. And so applications for that closed last week. We received two applications. And so assuming that both of those applicants are appointed, we hope to get back to a full commission next month. I think the applications are just forwarded to the council members. So they'll have to review and potentially interview folks to make their decision. But just stay tuned and I'll keep you up to date on that. But the application period has closed. And so thank you for, anyone who helped advertise that so we could get some applications for, to have a full commission. With that, once we get the full commission seated, we'll have to vote on chair and vice chair. Thank you, Vice Chair Hancock, for stepping up and managing these meetings until we get a formal vote to decide the chair and the vice chair decisions. But just know that's kind of on our agenda for a future topic. And then looking ahead, once we have a new city council and a new planning commission, we typically do a land use 101 presentation. Some of you have seen those before. So we will be looking to schedule one of those at another joint meeting with the council. And staff will try to focus on some of the housing law to just bring everybody on the commission and in the community up to date and provide a summary on some of the changes that we've seen. We do hope to hear back from the state on our housing element next month. So that way we can move that towards adoption. And then that will, you know, that combined with our strategic planning, we'll be informing kind of our work plan for the next year. So if you have topics you'd like to propose to us or to either be informed on with the land use 101 or things that we should focus our efforts on, please pay attention to the city council's strategic planning efforts. And those are really going to kick off next month. And then lastly, we have a new employee, Carla Duncan here. Putting her on the spot, but Carrie Pahone, our permit technician who normally clerks our meeting, has announced her retirement. She's been with the city 15 years, a very long time. Excellent employee, really the hub of our department. Everything that comes in and out goes around her. And so she has announced her retirement. Her last day is actually next week. last day is actually next week. And so, oh, Pratik Thapa, this is, I think, the first in-person meeting for him as well. So he is a planning technician. So between him and Carla, that will be the planning department clerking the meetings for the commission. So and Kevin Patterson, the deputy city clerk, is training us up so we can be ready for the new commission. But just this is a lot of the department here. And so just wanted to introduce everyone. And obviously, thank you. Carrie is not here this evening, but just give her a great thanks because she put in a lot of work for the city. And really sad to see her go, but good for her on to the next chapter. So with that, that concludes my department presentation.
Thank you, and welcome to new members or employees. Anything from start, anything from the the commission? I have nothing to to say. So I think at that case, we will call the so I guess items received after the agenda was posted is the the last one, which we had one item.
And we saw that. There was the the one letter that we received. And then there was a modified. It was just some color modifications to page 28 of the packet which you have there. So those were the only two two items.
Okay. Well, I call the planning commission to end at 8:14. I think it went a lot faster this one than the previous meeting, that everybody went through and.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.